Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Good. Yep. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall council chambers located at 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. If everyone will please rise for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this night, these citizens, these board members, and all of our city employees and first responders. Give us wisdom, patience, and clarity as we go about our city's business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
At this time, I would like to call PAC 1990 and Troop 333 into the room. We have special guests this evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're very honored to have them. Go ahead.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you PAC 1990. This is Simone. Simone, you want to wave to everybody? Simone and Peyton are individual members of PAC 1990 and have been in the PAC since 2022. X-Man is down there. X, waved to everybody. That's Xavier. Xavier is 10 years old. He's been in, just completed his second year with the PAC. Colin Hansen, who called everyone to order. Colin is 11. Troop, he's been with the group for almost four years, crossed over to the troop after being in the Cub Scouts. Sean Lockaby is 12 years old, also PAC 1990. And last but not least, Peyton Fagan, who's 19, PAC 1990. We're really honored to have all of them here today and to lead us in the pledge. And if you guys can, give these people a round of applause. We really appreciate it. Thank you all very much. Colin, great job.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
That was way better than anything I could have ever done. We will now establish a quorum. Roll call from my left, please.
Burns here.
Evan here.
Jacobs here.
Burson here. Austin here.
We have a quorum. Citizens Communications. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.007, members of the public may speak on any topic. Comments are limited to three minutes, and no action may be taken by the council. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. We have one speaker tonight, Brandy Rayburn. If you would please come to the podium, please, ma'am.
I just wanted to speak about the request for the church to build next to my house. My name is Brandy Rayburn. I live, oh, let me put on my readers. I live at 117 East Bar H Drive, which is a residentially-owned, zoned home that is directly next door to the proposed location request. When I purchased my home, the church was already there and on its property. I do not oppose or wish to impede on anyone's right to assemble or worship. I, as a night shift nurse, I've been a neonatal nurse for 25 years. Living next door to the church was initially a pro for me because there was only going to be people there on Sundays and Wednesdays and working nights and sleeping during the days. That would be, it was kind of a draw for me. But over the time, however presently, the church has grown into more than just assembling and worship. It has become more of a, they have a food giveaway location, which means they have commercial storage, which includes commercial refrigeration storage, and these run on generators that kick on and off all day of the night, day and night. They also have refrigerator styled 18-wheelers, which provide storage and run also all day and night. So the food giveaway has not only caused noise pollution, it has also increased the amount of traffic and impeded the flow of traffic in my neighborhood. It also has increased the traffic on my property itself because people have drove through my yard to get in line for said food pickup. The proposed request to build appears to be more of a community rec center, as described last night in the planning and zoning meeting, and not so much as an assemble and worship for the congregation during the congregation times. I would like to point out that the amenities the rec center is offering are already offered through the community, less than a half a mile from this location, at the city-established parks. They have all of the soccer fields, baseball fields, volleyball, basketball, with all the adequate parking, security, lighting, all of those things already there. And it's not in a residential area, it's in the community area. I also would like to point out that they mentioned something about the GED classes and all of that, too, and I understand them wanting to do that, but there is also community-driven places that they can get that here already because those are already offered in our community as a resource in the library. So that is offered here for the community already. So most of the things that are, that this is supposed to house are things that we already have as a community that is offered by our city. So in closing, this building will increase the traffic, increase the noise pollution, increase the possible rain drainage to my property when they change the layout to the property, and decrease my property value of my home. And I hope that the council can deny this request to build in a residentially-zoned area and uphold my fundamental right to have a quiet, peaceful enjoyment of my home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Moving on to consent agenda. 6A. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports, the March 20, 2025 special meeting minutes, the March 25th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, and the EDC February financials. Do I have a motion?
Move that we accept the consent agenda as is.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Burns, second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I have a vote from my left, please?
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Burson, yes. Austin, yes.
Consent agenda passes. New business. 7A. Proclamation, Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I want everyone to know that these are, this is the team that helps keep all of our people and our first responders safe. The proclamation states, whereas the second full week in April has been declared National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, fire services, and ambulance services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our deputies, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained and relayed from citizens who access the 911 emergency system, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our first responding personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunications of the Gunbarrel City, Texas have contributed to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas our public safety telecommunications daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services. Each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas hereby proclaims the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025 as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I think a short round of applause for all of those people would be apropos. Dr. Smith, would you like to speak to this?
I can. This group is the group that keeps all of our officers safe. They are behind the scenes. They are in a dark room most of the time. They're the faces that none of our public see, but they are the lifeline between the officers on the street and their safety network. I can't say enough about our team. They go above and beyond every single day, and I just really, really appreciate what they do for us.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. 7B. Now a presentation of quarterly department reports, including the City Treasurer, City Secretary, and City Planner. First giving the report be our City Treasurer, Mickey Rainey, the greatest city treasurer in the history of small government. You're welcome.
I'm just going to read from the screen because, you know, I get real nervous. This is the City of Gunbarrel City Financial Report, fiscal year ending 2025, quarter ending March 2025. The city has completed 50% or six out of 12 months of fiscal year 2025 as of March 31st, 2025. I had a cute little pie chart here, and it wasn't working with me, so I had to put it in a bar chart. I apologize for that, but this kind of shows that we are midway through. Our revenue highlights, our sales tax is on target at 50.63%. Fines and penalties continue to increase. We received the third draw from Texas CDBG Longleaf Grant, and our revenue total is at 57.91%. Did I go too far? Janet, it's that same sheet. So this sheet is not correct. We changed it, and for some reason, it will not save my change, but this is the street sales tax money comparison. I apologize. Can you blow it up? You saw me do it. I'm so sorry. I'm going to skip that slide. These are our expenses. The total expense is at 55.28. Some of our expense highlights, the remodel of the court has been completed, and the remodel of the fire department restrooms is complete. These are our special funds, October through March of 2025. It's just a brief breakdown of ins and outs. Personnel in open positions, new hires. We've hired in the last quarter, Police Officer Justin Schaefer, Police Officer Taylor Murdock, who is here in the audience, Police Officer Stephen Hawkins, and Police Lieutenant Tony Simmons. Open positions, fire chief is, we have a fire chief position open, a police officer position open, and two dispatcher positions open. These are our employees for the quarter who came off of, who have had work anniversaries. I started with January and ended with March. So Jerry Lowe has been here 12 years, Jake Rainey, six, Michael Palmroy, two, Brooke Harrell, five, Mike Howell, 14, Kristy Powell, three, Jace Garza, two, Casey Kundoff, two, Casey Carter, two, and Adrian Ruiz, one. So thank you for your service. Our audit is complete. Don Allman would have been here this month, but because we moved it up, he didn't have time to have it ready, so he will be presenting the audit report in May. And that's it.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Rainey.
Thank you.
Next, our City Secretary, Janet Dillard.
I have some technical difficulties with the mic over there, so I'm over here today. So here is a quick view of our meetings held in the past three months. There was a total of 16, and this does include an ordinance review committee. Currently, we have one full-time vacancy and one alternate position available on the Board of Adjustments. Just a reminder, this is a board that consists of five members and two alternates. They meet as needed once a month. Their last meeting was in November. We have received two applications, and interviews will be scheduled with you guys in May. Some activities include 33 open records requests that were fulfilled in the last three months through my office. One TABC license application was filed, and a lien release was given for an amount payoff of about $900, and that was done this month. Early voting for our general election begins a week from today here at City Hall. A couple other local voting locations include the Maybank City Hall and then the Ray of Hope in Seven Points. And a couple updates to our election page since the last presentation that I made include an early voting roster link. If you're interested in seeing these daily reports, they can be found on our page. We also have available a list of registered voters, sample ballots, campaign finance reports for candidates, and their next filing report is due on April 25th, so those will be available next Friday for anyone who wants to take a look. This month, I participated in a records management officer meeting with other officers around the state. Training was really informative. It was a great refresher for records management. But what interested me the most were all the updates regarding the bills in the current legislative session. Some potential changes that are definitely going to affect our day-to-day operations are being considered, so just so you know, we're keeping up with these, and we'll follow up as needed. And then some fun extracurricular activities going on in the city this last weekend was the Easter egg hunt and the biannual trash-off, which was my first time participating in. It was an experience, I'm happy to report, was a huge dirty success. It was super fun working with the street guys, and I really can't wait to do it again. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, our City Planner, Brittany Lewis.
I appreciate the opportunity to present an update on the planning activities with Gunbarrel City. This quarterly report, I'll provide an overview of completed projects, pending projects, and upcoming projects that contribute to our city's growth and development. Before we dive into details of specific projects, I'd like to give you an overview of several pending projects. The pending projects you see are in various stages of the development process. As items come to the team for consideration, we'll continue to work with each developer. So starting with Infinity Cove Luxury Motel, the replat is complete with compliance requirements. It went before the Planning and Zoning Commission last night, received recommendation for approval, and it will be coming before you this evening. The site plan is also fully compliant. It was reviewed and approved by Planning and Zoning last night as well, just waiting on the replat approval. We previously discussed this project during our last City Council meeting. Since then, we received communication from the developers. To recap, the project site was rezoned to planned development in April of 2023, making it an important step in aligning the site with our vision growth. By early July, we received the project concept graphics, followed shortly by the initial site plan submission in mid-July. Our team conducted a thorough review and provided feedback in August of 2023, ensuring the developer had clear guidance on necessary revisions and next steps. However, after August, we had no further communication from the developers until after this project was discussed at the City Council meeting. Currently, the project is awaiting a flood plan boundary determination from FEMA, and we are now back in communication with the developers and continue to work with them to move forward, move the project forward. The developer of Hillsdale Phase 2 did request a variance from multiple subdivision ordinance requirements in order to construct a private gated neighborhood with unique infrastructure elements. Their request included a proposed 60-foot-wide privately-owned right-of-way, private ownership and maintenance, the stormwater runoff compliance, where the direct discharge was in compliance with Section 155.40 of the subdivision ordinance. The variance outcome, on February the 25th, City Council denied the variance. That means that the decision, or that the developer must revise their site plan to comply with the city's subdivision ordinance requirements. Moving forward, we have received the site plan submittal on March 3rd, or, excuse me, March 11th, and Mudo and Associates reviewed this on March 24th, as it's not in compliance. They did go ahead and resubmit on April the 11th, and we're currently waiting on the compliance review to be complete. Next, I'd like to provide an update at 606 East Main Street and its progress towards development. In November of 2024, this property was annexed into Gunbarrel City, bringing it under the city's jurisdiction. Following the annexation, you approved for the rezoning of the property to R5, aligning it with the city's long-term development plans. Now that the zoning is in place, the developer is moving forward with the preliminary plat process for the subdivision. At this stage, we'll be working closely with the developer to ensure that the preliminary plat meets all city requirements and aligns with subdivision regulations, and I'll continue to provide updates as this project progresses. This project is for a youth activity center located at 142 Rodney Drive here in Gunbarrel City. We have received their application for a special use permit on March 17th. That went before Planning and Zoning Commission last night. The Planning and Zoning Commission has given recommendation for approval. The special use permit will come before you tonight for your approval, and the next step for this project will be that the site plan will go before planning and zoning if the special use permit is approved. The site plan for HTO has been reviewed for compliance with city ordinances. There was actually one small thing that they had to fix as far as landscaping. As of 6 o'clock tonight, I did receive the compliance review stating that it is in compliance, so that will be going before planning and zoning next month. And I'd also like to highlight several upcoming projects that are currently in the early stages of review and development. A new dental office is being proposed, contributing to the city's expanding healthcare services. The site plan will be reviewed for compliance with zoning, infrastructure, and accessibility standards. Also, a special use permit application for a new daycare facility on East Main Street is expected to come before you next month. We've had several preliminary meetings with the developers regarding potential future projects. As these concepts progress and formal applications are submitted, we'll continue to keep you informed and provide updates accordingly. We've had some truly special community events recently that brought everyone together and reminded us just how wonderful our city is. First up was the Gunbarrel City Christmas Parade, Bay Bell's Toy Drive, and then most recently, our Easter egg hunt, where I got to assist the Easter Bunny with photos with the children. Events like these are what make Gunbarrel City feel like home, and I'm grateful to be a part of a team and community that values these moments, and I look forward to being involved in many more. And if you have any questions.
Questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I think it's safe to say we have some great things going on in our city and under great leadership. We have an incredible staff here at City Hall, and we are all very blessed to have each and every one of them be a part of our team. Thanks again, ladies. I'd now like to open a public hearing on a request to replat eight lots, lots 1, 2, part of lot 3, 4, 5, 6, part of lot 7, and part of lot 8 in the Northwood Shores subdivision in the JP Brown survey abstract 59 owned by Infinity Lakefront LLC into three lots, lot 1R, 2R, and 3R. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf? Hearing none. I will now close the hearing. 8B. Consider and take action on a request to replat eight lots, lots 1, 2, part of lot 3, 4, 5, 6, part of lot 7, and part of lot 8 in the Northwood Shores subdivision in the JP Brown survey abstract 59 owned by Infinity Lakefront LLC into lots, three lots, lot 1R, 2R, and 3R. Our sponsor on this agenda item will be our City Planner, Ms. Lewis.
I don't think it's working anymore. On March the 11th, the application was received. The Planning and Zoning Commission gave recommendation last night. Tonight is the City Council meeting. It's also important to note that the property is zone commercial, so it did not require us to give public notice. This slide presents the full picture of the proposed replat. As shown, the adjustments are designed to meet zoning requirements while ensuring compatibility with the surrounding area. The replat maintains compliance with the minimum lot area, the setbacks, and other dimensional standards outlined in the B2 zoning district. This slide provides a zoomed-in view of the replat, allowing for a closer look at the specific lot adjustments, and it also has a zoomed-in view on lot 1R. This next slide has a zoomed-in view of lot 2R and 3R. This district is designed for commercial development along major roads and intersections, allowing for a mixed use that serves both the local community and visitors. This This replat complies with all the B2 zoning requirements, ensuring that the development meets the standards set forth in our city ordinance. The site has been planned to allow for a mix of commercial uses, including retail, professional services, and motels, which are all permitted by right within this district. The dimensional requirements for this replat have been followed as well. There are no limitations on the minimum lot area or maximum lot coverage. The required setbacks have been adhered to with a forty-foot for the front and zero feet for the interior sides and rear, except where adjacent to residential zones, where they've incorporated a twenty-five-foot setback for compatibility. In summary, this replat complies with the B2 zoning district regulations. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, and then also, the developer property owner is here as well.
Questions for staff, council? Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Eight B. Consider and take action on a request to replat eight lots, lots one, two, part of lot three, four, five, six, part of lot seven and eight, and eight in the Northwood Shores subdivision in the JP Brown survey abstract fifty-nine, owned by Infinity Lakefront LLC into three lots, lot one R, two R, and three R. Do I have a motion?
I mean, if we take action on the request to replat eight lots, lot one, two, part of lot three, four, five, six, part of lot seven, and part of lot eight in the Northwood Shores subdivision in the JP Brown survey abstract fifty-nine, owned by Infinity Lakefront LLC into three lots, lot one R, two R, and three R.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
No further discussion? Vote from my right, please.
Foster, yes.
Person, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Eight C. I will now open a public hearing on a request from Cedar Creek Church of God to grant a special use permit for a recreational building located at 142 Rodney Drive in Gun Barrel City, Texas, owned by Cedar Creek Church of God. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing none. I will now close the hearing. Eight D. Consider and take action to adopt ordinance number O-2025-005, granting a special use permit to Cedar Creek Church of God for a recreational building to be located at 142 Rodney Drive, Gun Barrel City, Texas. I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number O-2025-005, an ordinance of the city of Gun Barrel City, Texas, granting a special use permit to Cedar Creek Church of God located at 142 Rodney Drive, Gun Barrel City, Texas, to allow a recreational building and providing an effective date. Our sponsor of this again will be our city planner, Ms. Lewis.
We received the application on March seventeenth. Public hearing notice was sent to the paper on March nineteenth. Letters were mailed to the property owners within two hundred feet of the property on March twenty-seventh. The public hearing notice published in the paper for Planning and Zoning and City Council Meeting on March thirtieth, which is at least fifteen days prior to the city council meeting. Planning and zoning did give recommendation last night, and tonight is the regular city council meeting. This is the two-hundred-foot mailing boundary. I sent twelve letters. And this will be located at 142 Rodney Drive here in Gun Barrel City. The property is highlighted in yellow. The residential homes are highlighted in blue. And the businesses are shown in red. And this is the proposed building. As defined in the ordinance, semi-public recreational facilities are those that are accessible to the public but not typically operated by private or nonprofit organizations. These might include community centers, private gyms, or recreational clubs, and are subject to review by Planning and Zoning and City Council to ensure they align with the character and needs of the surrounding area. For this project, the proposed facility has been evaluated for compatibility with the adjacent land use, zoning regulations, adequate access, parking, infrastructure to support public use, compliance with safety, environmental standards, ensuring minimal disruption to the community with all the necessary considerations in place. This use, under the special exception, is appropriate for this location and meets our zoning requirements. And this does conclude my presentation. If you have any questions for me or also the pastor from the churches here as well.
Questions for staff?
What is the setback from that building to the house that's right next door? Yes, on...
So, the setbacks would be the same for the R1 subdivision. I believe it's five feet. Is all it does require them to be.
Do you have any idea how tall that building's going to be? Has it been...
I don't know. That would be more when they move forward with the site plan is when they'll start developing.
I was just wondering if they'd cast a shadow. You know how big a shadow onto that property? That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to conditionally approve a request from Cedar Creek Church of God for a special use permit for a recreational building located at 142 Rodney Drive, Gun Barrel City, Texas, owned, operated by Cedar Creek Church of God, on the condition that the church works with the engineers to situate the facility closer to the business district to the south of the church.
I have a motion with that condition. Do I have a second?
Evan, second.
I have a motion and a second with that condition. Any further questions? Discussion? If none, vote from my left, please.
Burns, yes.
Evan, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Person, yes.
Foster, yes.
Motion passes. Nine A. Economic Development. The first reading of resolution number R-2025-002, approving a performance agreement by and between the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost, Inc., to provide financial assistance in an amount not to exceed fifty percent of the qualified expenditures and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution number R-2025-002, I will read into the record. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Gun Barrel City, Texas, approving a performance agreement by and between the Gun Barrel City Economic Development Corporation and Gray Ghost, Inc., a Texas corporation authorized pursuant to sections 501.103 and 505.158 of the Texas Local Government Code, and providing for an immediate effective date. Speaking on this will be none other than our EDC Director from sunny Colorado Springs, Dr. Smith.
Right now, it's pretty cloudy, but...
Oh, sorry.
It is our first performance agreement under our small business incentive policy. This item does require two readings. So, tonight is the first reading. Our May regular meeting will be the second reading. This is a small business incentive performance agreement with Gray Ghost, Inc. that does business at GBC Family Resource Center in Gun Barrel City. This is a fifty percent reimbursement grant with the EDC funding up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. In light of that, Family Resource Center must spend twenty-five thousand. It is approved for two projects. The parking lot improvements, they must spend twenty thousand. We will reimburse ten. Signage improvements, they must spend five thousand, and we will reimburse twenty-five hundred. They do have to meet some criteria. They have to move the eighteen-wheeler that is in the parking lot along Highway 334 to allow additional visibility of their business. They must replace the roof of the facility at their own expense. They must spend twenty thousand dollars on parking lot improvements. They must spend five thousand dollars on signage improvements. They must obtain two quotes on the two projects that the EDC is partnering with them on. They must complete all work and submit all documentation to the EDC within nine months of the signed agreement. They must maintain at least two full-time equivalents until September the thirtieth of 2027, and this is in line with Local Government Code 501.158B1. And they must provide two compliance verifications where we confirm they are still in business. They are still operating at that location and confirm their number of employees for both the 2026 year and the 2027 year. I'm happy to answer any questions. The EDC worked very closely. The EDC has appointed a loan and grant subcommittee that consists of Mr. Key, the president, Ms. Rankin, the treasurer, and Lisa Matthews. And they reviewed this. They met with the business. They went out and toured the business, which is how the roof issue came up and the eighteen-wheeler along 334 came up. So, this will be our first partnership. They do have to do all the repairs. The repairs have to be inspected. They have to provide us copies of their quotes and their canceled checks before we reimburse the up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Questions for Dr. Smith? I apologize. I described you with the wrong hat. You are the EDC Director speaking. Anyway, do we have any questions for Dr. Smith?
I'm sorry?
Asking if they have any questions for you. If none. Nine B. Consider and take action on a settlement agreement and general release with Jerry and Mary Moody, DBA GBC Medical Associates. Again, our EDC Director, Dr. Smith, will speak to this.
Good evening, council. This is a settlement agreement and general release with GBC Medical. The total loan amount that GBC Medical took out, I believe, 2019, 2020 with the EDC, was eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars. The total due on their loan today with interest and fees is fifty thousand two hundred and thirteen. I have brought this to the EDC Board and the council in the past as we were doing letters of default. GBC Medical has paid a total of forty-eight thousand eighteen dollars and one cent to date. They paid a total of thirty-eight thousand forty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents in principal. One of the council members asked me for that information, so I wanted to include it tonight. They were in default as of February the sixteenth. I do want to let council, as I did with EDC, know after we discussed this in an EDC meeting, Mr. Moody did reach out to us, immediately sent us two one-thousand-dollar checks, two different one-thousand-dollar checks, and we refused those. We didn't want to start the process back over and end up in the same loop we had been in. Mr. Moody then connected with our attorney and put together a settlement agreement. And we did a bit of negotiation on where we might land, on what that settlement looks like. The EDC did approve the settlement agreement at their last meeting, and now, we are asking council to approve it. The settlement agreement is for thirty thousand dollars. The great news is, we didn't tie up a lot of attorney time. We have a couple of hours invested in this, not the time it would take for him to file a lawsuit. And at the attorney's advice, you know, the more time we invest in this, the EDC, the more it costs the EDC. And he felt like that this was a good settlement amount because this way, we're not spending the ten to twenty thousand to file suit on the Moody's and try to collect the remaining funding.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? If none, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the settlement agreement and general release with Jerry and Mary Moody, GBC Medical Associates, for our thirty thousand dollars.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Vote from my right, please.
Foster, yes. Person, yes.
Jacobs, yes.
Evan, yes.
Burns, yes.
Motion passes. Want to thank everyone for coming this evening. Nice, short, and sweet. Meeting is now adjourned.